There's Erin Tanyali and Alex McFarlane. Come on. Erin is an excellent student who is motivated to succeed. Her dedication to academics has made her a permanent fixture on Bolton High School's high honor roll for all four years of her high school career. On top of her responsible nature to both herself and her academics, she is an active contributor to the Bolton High School community. She seamlessly balances her rigorous academic schedule while still finding time to serve as a peer mentor through Bigs and Littles and the National Honor Society. Her resume reflects a student who can stick to a commitment. She has served on the Bolton Board of Education as our student rep now, as well as contributing member to both volleyball and the tennis teams. The qualities that Erin possesses and shares with Bolton High School make her a very deserving recipient of this award, and she is weighing her options on which four-year university to attend in the fall. Congratulations and well done. Alex is our other recipient of this award. His strong work ethic and determination are qualities that do not go unnoticed at Bolton High School. His teachers report that he displays higher-level thinking skills, which is not only a direct result of his efforts, but his willingness to step outside of his comfort zone to take a risk in the classroom. He sees every single day as an opportunity to do his best and to prepare for the future. On top of Alex's academic obligations, he is also an active member on the BHS Track and Field Team, demonstrating outstanding leadership by taking on the role of captain. On any given day, you will find Alex doing hurdling drills, lifting weights, and completing sprints in order to top his personal best. It is this type of self-discipline that propels him in and outside of the classroom. Alex is interested in studying sports management and is deciding on which university he will attend in the fall. Congratulations out. Hold, come right up and take those pictures. Well deserved. Well done.
Thank you.
Did we get Erin? Did you get her in there? You did? Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Just making sure. All right, you're welcome. Well done, Bolton here. And now on to our CAPS Award, and we're going to start with Bolton Center School first. The Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent's Award is presented annually to two students from Bolton Center School who show a strong commitment to academics as well as their school community. This year's award recipients are Daisy Coop and Abby Jentelunas. You would come on up here. All right, so Daisy is one of this year's CAP leadership recipients. I'm gonna read both of them. That's okay. It's a hard-working, conscientious student. Over the last three years, she has made such tremendous growth in her academics and confidence, even earning the Most Growth Award from sixth to seventh grade. Daisy can be depended upon by her teachers to always try her best. Furthermore, she has amazing self-advocacy skills and is a role model for peers who may be too hesitant to reach out with a question or for extra help. Moreover, Daisy is an active participant in class and always willing to read aloud or to add to class discussion. Daisy was even one of the top three finalists in last year's middle school poetry slam competition. Outside of the classroom, she's been an active member of middle school book club, also participated in guitar club as well as tennis. Daisy's teachers are very proud of her in this must-deserved recognition. Abby Jentelunas is the recipient of the 2023-24 CAPS Leadership Award as well. Her academic ability speaks for itself, as her name is consistently found on the high honor roll. In the classroom, her positive attitude and academic confidence does not go unnoticed by her peers and her teachers. She works well on challenging assignments with all students and is able to lead by example in a way that brings out the best in her classmates. Abby has a unique ability to lead other students in the group toward a common goal while still letting their voices be heard. It is qualities like these that make her an asset to the BCS community. Outside the classroom, she's been an active member of the book club and the robotics team, as well as joining the BCS basketball team this year. Congratulations, Abby. Your teachers and all of us are very proud of you as well. Well done. Come on up, Mom. Come up for those pictures. There you go. Congratulations. Well deserved. And now for the Bolton High School CAPS Award. This is presented annually to students from the graduating class of Bolton High School. The award is presented to those students who show a strong commitment to academics and a strong commitment to their school community. These efforts, the efforts that these two students have made over the past four years are truly commendable. Both have built a very impressive resume, including but not limited to a rigorous academic transcript, an unending list of activities, and a strong commitment to promoting school spirit. This year's award recipients are Sierra Brick and Ben Roth. Sierra is a model student at Bolton High School, demonstrating respect, responsibility, and bringing an overall positive energy to everything she does. She is actively engaged as a member in all classes ranging from AP Calculus to AP US Gov. She has distinguished herself as an exceptional student who does not shy away from rigorous course load. While she thrives academically, she has consistently participated in several extracurricular activities in and outside of school. To name a few, she is an active student council member and team leader on the BHS varsity volleyball team and softball team. Through these activities, Sierra is able to give back to her community while also fulfilling her own interests. For instance, she initiated a volleyball clinic for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, helping them to develop their skills and giving them an opportunity to play the game. And now we're gonna have coach for that next year, and that's all because of you. So, big job. Her strong work ethic and altruistic propensity make her a deserving recipient of this award. She is in the process of carefully selecting which post-secondary institution to attend in the fall and plans to pursue her passion of chemistry. Congratulations. Well deserved. Ben is a polite, humble, and kind young man who is well-deserving of this recognition. He is a student who has consistently taken rigorous coursework at Bolton High and fills his leisure time with many extracurricular activities. To name a few, he currently serves as an active member of the Executive Board for Student Council and is a contributing athlete to the soccer and baseball teams. His strong character and work ethic have earned him recognition in the past, serving as BHS American Legion Boy State Representative last summer, as well as commencement marshal for the class of 2023. He is an enthusiastic learner and always exudes positivity in everything he does. Teachers report that while Ben always asks great questions, he has a strong ability to answer questions about things they haven't even learned yet. Ben often amazes others with the amount of background knowledge that he possesses. Ben has been accepted to multiple post-secondary institutions, including many competitive business programs. He's carefully weighing his options for a four-year university he will attend in the fall. Ben, congratulations. Well done. Next, on to the American Legion Auxiliary Laurel Girl State and American Legion Connecticut Boy State Program. And I would like to call up to be honored Emma DeRoziers and Andrew Goodness. Andrew can't be here tonight, so I'm gonna go with his first name if that's okay. All right, thanks. Boy State is a program that draws together the best and the brightest male high school juniors to receive a hands-on experience in the operation and fundamentals of government and democracy. The American Legion Boy State will take place this June at the University of New Haven. This gives boys an opportunity to spend a week on a college campus at no cost while learning civic leadership skills, developing pride in American citizenship, seeing the government in action, and establishing lifelong friendships. The boys will be challenged to discuss and seek solutions to many problems facing our state today. One boy is selected from each accredited high school across the state. To be selected for nomination, the candidate must demonstrate leadership ability, academic merit, and interpersonal and oratorical skills. Andrew has been selected for this award, and we would like to congratulate him and look forward to hearing about his experience. Miss Emma DeRoziers, going to Girl State. I love it. It's a program where a female is competitively selected from each high school. Students will have the opportunity to attend a week-long program of learning from June 22nd to the 27th at the University of New Haven focused on responsible citizenship and leadership. The bulk of the time is spent by experiencing the political processes, starting with town government and progressing to state government. The student will be expected to participate in electing officials, conduct town meetings, debate bills, campaigning, party platform creation, and bill writing. In order to be selected as an impressive female citizen, the student must show willingness to learn about the government and citizenship. The student must show responsibility, leadership skills, and have good moral character. Emma DeRoziers has been selected for this award because she deserves it. Not only does Emma have great awareness of historic events and issues, but she is able to synthesize information at a very high level and respectfully state her thoughts and opinions. Emma has a natural talent in bringing others together in a collegial conversation. These attributes and many more make Emma the ideal recipient of this award. Congratulations. Emma, I went to Girl State a gazillion years ago, and I loved it, so I hope you have a great time. Mom, Dad, coming up? Congratulations, Ellen. And now on to our girls' basketball team. So, if I have any basketball members in the audience, come on up, ladies. The 2023-2024 Bolton High School Girls Basketball Team was small, but they certainly were mighty. The team had an overall record of 15 and 8 and finished fifth in the conference with a record of 8 and 4. The team reached the Class S State Tournament semifinals, led by NCCC All-Conference Players McKenna Graves and Nia Islam. McKenna was recently named to the Class S All-State Team. Congratulations to the team for all of your accomplishments this year, and best of luck to our departing seniors, Emma Deal, Nia Islam, and McKenna Graves. Congratulations, girls. Well done. Yep. And last but not least, I would like to introduce Daven Duffy. Daven, come on up. Junior Daven Duffy competed in the February State Open in the 600 meters in the New England. And he finished fifth within 1 hour, 25 minutes, and 16 seconds. This qualified him for the New England Championship Meet at Reggie Lewis Center in Boston on March 2nd. Daven is the first track athlete in the history of Bolton High School to qualify for the New England Meet. In addition to having great natural talent, Daven is one of the hardest-working athletes Mr. Smith has ever coached. That's a direct quote from Coach Smith. We're glad it got canceled tonight. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to run a different night, but I'm glad you're able to be here. Congratulations. To the girls' basketball team, I have a little something special for you on another day. So, you're gonna get called to my office when you do the week after vacation. Don't panic. Thanks. Congratulations. And that, sorry, and that concludes our celebration of excellence tonight. Thank you all for joining us. You're more than welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting, but if you would like to go, now would be the time. Thank you, everybody, and enjoy April break. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, we will move on with our regular meeting and comments from the audience per Bylaw 923-9325. Comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. Board values public comment. All comments are directed to the board. Members of the public, which the speaker asks, please state their name and address for the record. All speakers must maintain appropriate standards of decorum. Resistant, disruptive, or inappropriate conduct will be grounds for termination of the individual's right to address the board. Public comment is not a question-answer period. Responsive time public comment is not part of the board's procedure. Or an administration will determine when, how, or the address, questions that arise. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment this evening? Not many left, sure. Name an address for the record.
My name's Phil Maderos. I live at 26 Armage Court in Ashford, Connecticut.
Go ahead.
I got a text on the way here from one of the more than 40 certified staff who have left BCS in the last seven years. It says, "Good luck. I know you have nothing but the best interest of the teachers and students I'm rooting for you." And it felt really good to get that, so I wanna say the same thing to you guys. I know that you have nothing but the best interest of the teachers and students, and I'm rooting for you. When I came here nine years ago, I was told that teachers come here to stay, and nine years ago, that was true. But now it's not, and I believe that you care enough about your teachers to ask why. In 2017, we were above average across multiple metrics the state puts out around achievement, accountability, growth, and we no longer are. I'm gonna share a written report for you that shows this, as well as issues like chronic absenteeism, behavior intervention, and special education. I'm optimistic that you care enough about this community to ask why those things have changed so much compared to state averages and even within the district over the last seven years, and ask, "How can this happen at a school with such amazing kids and so many passionate, talented teachers?" It's because the change in administration has led to a complete loss of the foundational systems that made us successful. Social-emotional learning, PDIS, behavior intervention, and discipline have largely been dumped back on teachers without support. The results of this are the numbers that I'll share. Even more concerning, we don't follow the law regarding bullying. And as a result of these things, we've lost our positive culture and climate. And students are not the only ones being bullied. One year ago, 80% of BCS teachers told me that things were not going well. Many told me some of the reasons included being treated disrespectfully by administration, fear of retribution, and discipline for speaking out. They cited having no input or voice, no meaningful disciplinary follow-up from the office. They said bullying was not being handled, that they feel overwhelmed and unsupported. I'm here to draw your attention to a stark reality at BCS: You don't get to see. Teachers are literally crying in classrooms and halls. Others are burning out at their wits' end in such a toxic environment. And there are veterans, absolute treasures, who feel stuck in this situation, unable to speak out, unable to go elsewhere due to their experience, and unwilling to lead their students in that situation. I don't expect to hear back from you or be a part of your solutions, but I am at your service to back up any of the information that I'm sharing. In doing this, I consider my duty to this community effectively discharged. My resignation will be effective Friday. Thank you for all you do. And more than that, thank you for what I believe you are going to do, just by doing your job and being who you are. I believe in you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. No one left to make a public comment. Most likely, I'm sure. Okay.
I'm just gonna have one on this side, right? Do we have on this side any additions, like?
I do not.
Thank you.
On to routine business and the approval of minutes. I have a motion to accept the minutes of the March 14th, 2020, for Board of Education Business Meeting.
Second.
Do we have any questions, comments, or edits on these minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And then, opposed, or abstaining. On to Board of Ed Committee Reports. Finance.
Yeah, yeah.
Who wants to do finance?
Yeah, so let's see. In terms of expenditures, we're 62% expended versus 65% last year. There's a few transfers that we'll walk through, and then a couple other discussions, but I'll hand it off to Chris.
Great. Thank you very much, Ashley. So, we have a few transfers to go over. So, we have a transfer to cover the cost of typing agent subscription for grades 2 to 4, a reclass for, to increase in the Clean Harbor Chemical Disposal Charge, which I think we talked about during budget deliberations and the increase in those costs, a reclass to purchase some library media center supplies, a reclass to purchase some music instructional supplies, a reclass to purchase some library books, a reclass to fund the BHS baseball and softball facility program improvements, which I just wanna point out are a number of things, including batting tunnel installation and materials, which is $2,000, portable, two portable sock nets, three batting mats, a baseball indoor pitching mound for $1,500. The other ones are just much smaller numbers. I'm just calling out the larger numbers. Two 7-foot, 6-inch softball benches for the softball team for $2,400. We've got two helmet racks, infield screen, wheel kits, a large screen, more wheel kits, so totaling that amount. And that is being, coming out of the amount that was budgeted for the athletic trainer, so it's still within the athletic budget. A reclass to fund testing of Quizlet, booklet, Looklet, I can't even say it, Quizalign, Wordwall Pro, and just to cover the final cost of those. A reclass to purchase some English Language Arts instructional supplies. A reclass to purchase social studies instructional supplies. A reclass to purchase some library books at Bolton Center School. Transfer to cover the increased cost of the CPR certificates for our students who get CPR certified. A reclass to purchase some baseball and softball supplies that are needed, including hats, bats, balls. Reclass to cover the 2024 graduation lawn signs. Transfer to cover shortfall in instructional supplies in music. A reclass to cover the shortfall in systems for the PDQ inventory, which is what Novus is using to keep track of all of our technology, which I believe we talked about at another meeting. And to purchase 12 Chromebook carts for grades 5 through 8 for a grand total of $9,033, funded through reclasses within our instructional technology with the balance coming from systems. We have a lot of issues with breakage and some other things, and we feel at this point carts are a better way to go. Plus, that way, we're sure things are charged when they need to be, and we don't run into that issue as well. A reclass to cover the shortfall in tech ed repairs and maintenance for 9.5 cents. So, that include, that is the end of the transfers, and then I have a request once you approve these.
Do we have a motion, please, to approve the transfers from March?
I'll make a motion to approve March transfer.
Any questions or comments about any of these? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And then, opposed, abstaining.
All right. Thank you. So, now, I would call your attention to your budget sheet, and you will notice that we have trued up some more numbers under Administration Support and Central Services. So, we have some additional projected savings there. We've also trued up some more in salaries and personnel benefits. So, that total comes to $76,754. Then, on the third page, you will see that our total projected balance right now, primarily driven by unfunded positions and changes, either changes in insurance or due to the unfunded positions, no one taking insurance that we budgeted for, because we don't have a body, to $433,625. You've already committed $300,000 towards FY budget. My recommendation is that, a little later on in the agenda, that you commit $50,000 more. And I'm asking for a transfer tonight of $20,000, and this would be to purchase the remaining six USonic boards. I think we talked about that at the last meeting. We have a few spaces where we still don't have those boards. So, this would enable us to do that, and that's coming from a few different categories. So, $11,612 from personnel benefits, $6,388 from system management, and $2,000 from fiscal services to move into instructional technology for the purchase of those six boards.
Do we have a motion to approve the transfer of $20,000 from, what was it?
Yeah.
Transfer of $20,000, $11,612 from personnel benefits, and $6,388 from systems management, and $2,000 from fiscal services to instructional technology to purchase the six USonic boards.
And that remaining projected balance is a comfortable enough amount, I'm assuming, with the ever-changing landscape of special education?
Correct, and we'll go to that $50,000 piece in just a minute. So, can you hold that question for me just until we get there? Thank you. Right now, this is just on the $20,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $20,000.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about USonic boards or any of these? I keep looking up at the screen to see if I can be looking here. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay.
All right, on to BHS Report. We do not have one tonight.
Yes.
One of our kids is in Italy, and the other one had to go work on some other things.
Problem to have.
Yep.
Do we have any community meetings to report on?
I think so.
Good.
I see our PTA liaison is.
She's not here. I told her not to come last night.
Yes. There was a PTA meeting last night, and the superintendent was, possibly some other administrators were present too.
Yeah.
They were present to present the budget to the PTA. And I'll now turn things over to superintendent for superintendent's schools reports.
Okay, so going back to that additional recommendation of the $50,000 to Ben's question. Yes, I feel comfortable. So, we'd be sitting on at this point $63,625. I am certain that we will have additional monies to return. I think it's prudent at this point. This number is prudent for us to give towards next year's budget, and I think whatever in the end ends up being the total amount that's left at the end of this year will go towards the budget for the following year. And because we're still in this cycle of doing that, I think we would be ill-advised to do anymore.
I think it's wise to keep a buffer, and especially if you think the projected amount could continue to rise, then I'm comfortable with that also. I agree with your judgment.
Thank you.
I think it's small enough, too. It's not a.
Correct. Yep, correct. Thank you. So, we'll just need a motion to commit an additional $50,000 to the Finance Committee from the FY '24 budget savings towards the FY '25 budget, making the total commitment $350,000.
Someone.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thank you.
So, anyone have any other questions or comments about this commitment? So, anyone have any other questions or comments about this commitment? With the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? I think that's everybody. Sign up, it's not here, right? Okay, is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
We have no unfinished business. Do we have any new business? Feature business?
No.
Looking for a more new turn? Questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much.